Let me start by thanking you for coming out. I know that as a college community, our faculty, staff, and students believe in the opportunity to engage and have a conversation on many, many of the most important issues. Certainly before us, the economic times of the day, challenging times of the day, it requires us to come together as a community and to engage in conversation. So I thank you for coming out and sharing your wonderful capital union thought and also on behalf of our systems, our colleges, our colleges. I'd like to introduce President Wacho Beiden, who will be speaking this morning. I think sharing and giving us the opportunity to engage on a broader level, not just our internal conversation, but to give more insights and to understand where we are as a system and the kinds of things that we have to be looking into. Before President Beiden speaks, I'd like to ask you, Mr. Raj, who is speaking on behalf of the College Senate, to make an opening statement.
Good morning, President O'Beiden. My name is Ari Deitch, and I'm the Director of the Activism and Success Center and a member of the College Senate. On behalf of the College Senate and our college community, I'd like to welcome you to our home. Bienvenido a la casa. And express very mutual gratitude for the time that you've spent with members of the College, the community college system. We can appreciate that this process has been arduous and exhausting for you, and now that you're nearing the end of your business, we are amazed at your still standing. I'm grateful for your willingness to come here today and give us your full attention and consideration with an open mind and heart, as though this were your very first visit. Capital Community College has just completed a year-long NEASK self-study and is nervous and proud to power all the crowds together in this process to produce a document that reflects all of the outstanding work that we do, from our nationally recognized nursing and health career programs to our pursuit of pioneering grant opportunities, including from the Connecticut Department of Education, Federal Department of Labor, State Department of Social Services, NASA, and the National Advancement of Humanities. In our self-study, we also discuss our award-winning faculty, dedicated staff, 21st century classroom innovations, our effective response to budgetary pressures, our status as an achieving the dream leader college, and our well-chadged partnerships with Harvard community, including our highly acclaimed Harvard Heritage Program. Without a doubt, Capital Community College is pulling its weight and meeting its mission, and all you have to do is look at our self-study to see clear and compelling evidence of this. There's so much more I can share with you about this outstanding institution in terms of what we do, but I would like to leave you with a sense about who we are and what we mean to our students and our community. Who are we? We are more than a college to our students. We are their home and often their lifeline. This is a place where students who, against all odds, have the courage and position to step through our front doors to pursue a college education despite being the first in their family's team to have such an idea and despite being told or even made to feel if they are not college material. We provide hope for students who live in one of the most economically distressed cities in the country, who come to class while enduring extremely difficult life circumstances and, in many cases, personal trauma, as well as food and housing insecurity, even homelessness. We are an expanded-serving institution with a minority student population of about 70% of our network. Our students are a product of a school system with more than its share of challenges, and for many, becoming a successful college student means having to work extra hard to make up for significant academic deficits. Our students are immigrants and refugees who speak 23 languages and come from 52 countries who've escaped economic hardship and often horrific circumstances in their native countries. Our students are moms of young children and men who are seeking the second chance they deserve. They are veterans and people with disabilities who turn to us for guidance and compassion. They often juggle two or three jobs to support their children and even extended family members and struggle to get to class out of two or three hours of sleep while still wearing their work uniforms. Most importantly, our students are creative, courageous, compassionate, and caring people who are deeply, deeply appreciative of the support and opportunities that are available to them at this institution. We held an event yesterday on campus called the Compassion Project, led by our Linda Dominus, a motion to be here, but give her a lot of credit, and in this event, students shared their compelling personal stories of how they were met with compassion on our campus by faculty and staff members, and how much these experiences made a difference, not only in their academic achievement, but in their lives. Because of the harsh realities that our students face and the circumstances of their lives, CCC doesn't just deserve to be an equal car with other colleges. We need more than other colleges in order to level the playing field, more in the way of resources, facilities, faculty, support staff, and academic support services. We understand that you have to make some really tough decisions to create efficiency, which may involve consolidation of leadership and campus function. What we ask is that you please consider the vulnerability and dire needs of our student population in your decision-making, and then in this process, you will ensure that the needs of Capital Community College will be a number-one priority. At the end of the day, we hope that decisions about restructuring will ensure that this college will always be in the hands of inspirational and exceptional leaders who will be looking out for our students' best interests and will be committed to preserving the rights, unique identity, and strong governance of this very vibrant campus community. Further, please understand that our location here in the heart of the capital city is vital to this community's survival and growth. Capital Community College commencement is like no other that I've ever attended. The roar from the parents in the family section is almost deafening, even when a student is getting up to accept a diploma after completing the certificate program. That evening, the looks on the graduates and their families' faces tell our story. Without a doubt, this institution means the world to them, and that diploma is not just a piece of paper, it's a life changer. So President O'Beiden, we sincerely appreciate your visit, and we thank you for listening to us today and answering our questions. We ask that you please keep our students and this institution at the top of your thoughts and close to your heart in the days and weeks ahead.
So, thank you very much for the very eloquent and passionate opening to the conversation that I'm hoping we will have today. And, you know, I was very, quite honestly, upset that I could not make it here yesterday to the Day of Compassion. I was actually in Bridgeport at Husatonic, similar student population, similar challenges. And while you were having your program, as part of my day, I was visiting their Rainbow Center, where they had many, many students from the entire community there, and they even baked me a gay cake. And one of the things that struck me about my visit yesterday, not only was about their ability to come together as a group and feel safe and empowered and valued, but one of the students who was there had just recently gotten out of the hospital, a student transitioning, who was beaten within an inch of his life getting off of a bus in front of Husatonic about six weeks ago. But the courage that he had, and the way that he spoke, and wasn't giving up, really makes me get up every morning and come out and talk to all of the folks that are part of the system. So I am really, excuse me, happy to be here. I'm even happier, I have some coffee now. So my voice gets a little bit hoarse as these, this is my 15th in two weeks. And I felt it was important to go out and talk to the folks in the system directly to really frame the conversation, to talk to people about what some of the challenges are that we are facing, and how, since I announced the initiative of Students First, things have gotten worse. And I want to talk a little bit more about that today. All you have to do is pick up the newspaper in the morning and see that 1,100 layoffs notices are about to go out to executive branch agencies next week, to understand that things are just getting worse. So we need to have a conversation, and we need to figure out together how we can move the entire system forward, but especially the community colleges, because I understand, I don't want to be out of people's sight, because I understand, after visiting all of the schools over 17 months, and I visit all the time, I have student town halls, I have student conference calls, I work, I just want to acknowledge I have one of my bosses here today, the student region from this institution, so I have to be on my best But I really want to talk about what the choices are, because, you know, everything's about choices and everything's about options. And as we try to navigate through this very difficult financial times, we need to, I think, come together and figure out the best solution. Because, quite honestly, not having a conversation or not doing anything is really not an option, given the financial times that we live in. When I started this tour, we were working off of a governor's budget number that projected a 4.4% cut to the system budget, or $38 million in year one of the biennium. And as you looked over the next five to six years, what I call a structural deficit only increased. So it went from 38 to 50 to 75 to, I mean, it just kept going and going and going with no end in sight. Because as you know, 80% of the cost of running a system are people, and as costs go up, as they do even in your own daily life, you know, healthcare costs go up, everything goes up. So the fringe benefits that we are very fortunate all to have, I'm a state employee as well, so I love the fringe benefits, as those go up, our costs increase. And we can't keep trying to balance our financial burden on the backs of the students. So even when we have to have a conversation about tuition, it's not a conversation anybody really wants to have. When I proposed a tuition increase this year, I did it based on the fact that I didn't think we should do an increase that was the same as it had been or higher than it had been for the past few years. So even the increase that we proposed, which translates into an $8 a month additional financial commitment for students, was a lot. I get it. I've, you know, I've had, I've talked to many, many, many students. I don't think I hit every one of the 85,000, but I have touched many student lives in the time that I've been the president. So as we looked at that, and as we looked at the fact that the state was in a very difficult financial situation, and as we looked at, quite honestly, the community colleges, where 60% of the revenue that comes into a community college is from state support, and as that state support declines, so does the financial position of an institution, it became clear to me that we had to do something to try to make not only the institutions, but the system as a whole sustainable and resilient into the future. Because just passing on, for example, to Capital, next year, the projected cut from the governor's budget is about $1.7 million on the low end. On the high end, it goes up to over $4 million. And that was the high end three weeks ago. Since that, the state's financial position has worsened. The projected deficit has gone up to $2.2 billion next year and $2.7 billion the year after that. And what they're doing now up at the Capitol is trying to cut another $950 million off of the governor's proposed budget. So if anybody looks at that and thinks that's not going to affect us, I think then there's not a realism that's going on in the conversation. So what I did was, I said, listen, we need to do something, we need to look at all the options. I understand how valuable a community college is to the students they serve and to the community where they're located. So the option of closing one that I would propose was off the table. I made a conscious commitment that we needed to have those locations where students currently go to school, stay where they are. And I've also worked really hard to make sure that those satellite campuses are self-sustaining. So whether you're talking about the Hispanic population in Willimantic, or you're talking about some of the population in Meriden, we've been able to come up with ways in which those educational opportunities can still be offered to those students in those satellites in a much more cost-effective way, as a matter of fact, really no cost in terms of buildings and operational expenses. So the strategies I came up with basically said, not going to close a college, and I want to revisit that in a minute, because I want to let you know what the conversation is like at the Capitol right now. Don't want to close a college. Don't want to make the community colleges branches of the universities. So what do we look at? I proposed two strategies. I've been trying to be very clear about this as I've gone around the state, not to plan, not a plan with two functions. So two strategies, two savings targets, planning teams, let's all sit down and figure it out. Somebody had to start the conversation. I am convinced to this day, as I've traveled now to 15 other institutions, including Charter Oak, that had I not put that initiative out, we would not be talking about this now. We would still be thinking that somehow this institution could sustain a $4 million cut next year, an $8 million cut the year after that, and there's no more meat on the bones. So all of the great things that you're doing, we want to continue. We just need to find a different way to do it. So I said, the consolidation happened in 2011. So, you know, people can still, you know, relive that conversation from 2011, which some people are still living, and saying, that was, there was a horrible thing to do, we want to go back, and, you know, and I understand, but that was six years ago. We're a system. We should have been having this conversation in 2011 and 2012, but for a variety of reasons, I think some of those being, you know, leadership challenges, I like to call them, we did. So here we are in 2017, having a conversation that's six years overdue, about how do we take our collective expertise around 17 institutions and find a way to integrate some of the administrative functions around 17 institutions, keeping people on the campuses, keeping the functions on the campus, but a different way of functionally integrating those around 17 institutions, around purchasing, for example. We all purchase everything differently in 17 different places. We don't take advantage of our bulk purchasing power. Our food service around 16 institutions, because Charter Oak does not have a food service per se, everybody bids out their own and has their own vendor contract. Well, my common sense tells me that there might be a better way to do that. Why couldn't we suppose having one RFP go out that differentiates between residential and non-residential and see if we can get bids that drastically reduce the price we're paying for our food service? I think it's worth the conversation, and that's why we're putting these planning teams together. Financial aid processing is another one of my favorite, and that was, you know, started through some hard work of the work groups last summer, which basically talked about many of our campuses, because of limited resources, don't have the kind of time they'd like to have to interact directly with students, because some of the function, some of the timing is spent processing applications. In some cases, applications are filed timely, and most of them are completed. In some cases, not so much. We had to send out a SWAT team last year to try to help those campuses that were having a hard and hard time processing applications, because what happens if you don't process applications or you don't process them in a timely manner? What happens is, the student doesn't know what the award is, so the student will go somewhere else. And we have a lot of competition east of the river that does a really good job of getting students in the door, not so good, I don't think, in retaining and graduating students and paying the attention that you do here. But, you know, we have to be aware that there's competition for students. So the first strategy said, let's put these teams together in those six functional areas. And I think today is the deadline for them to be populated with official representatives. We've been asked by the different leadership groups that represent you all to put people on these teams. We've also asked if people aren't selected by their leadership groups, if they want to participate, please feel free to give, Jane is here and Bill are here, not as bodyguards, but they're here to, you know, to actually take down notes of what people say, because I like to go back and reprocess what I've heard, but also to take names, in a good way, you know, to take names in terms of, if you want to participate, do so. And also, for, you know, me to offer, some people have been a little shy in this kind of venue to speak. And so people have decided to email me directly with ideas, with concerns, and I responded so far. I have a batch from yesterday, because I was in Bridgeport until late last night, that I haven't responded to, but I'll do it over the weekend, because I want to hear from people, whether it's here or whether it's directly to me, I want to hear from people. So we'll put those teams together, teams will get to work right away, we'll work, you know, over the summer. I know that's been a concern for some folks, but I can't take the summer off. I mean, this is important. And we'll come up with some recommendations that then we'll synthesize. Some functions may have earlier recommendations, because a lot of work has been done at the work group level early last year. The unfortunate part about the work group, despite everybody's best efforts, we only got a savings goal of $5 million over two years. So while it was a good start, and people worked really collaboratively, in most cases, in those six groups, we weren't able to meet the targets, I think, that we need to meet. The other, which is drawing a lot more interest on community college campuses, is around the community college leadership consolidation strategy. And it basically says, in a state the size of Connecticut, with 12 institutions, with 12 leadership and administration groups, at 12, if you look at my favorite thing, which is the map, and you draw the 10-mile radius around each institution, you see, like in the middle of the state, it's like one big ball. So it basically says, can we take a look at doing something differently? Can we take a look at maybe having, you know, having a regional model? Can we take a look at having, you know, one main administration with 12 campuses? These are all models that we need to take a look at, and I've asked one of the presidents, Dr. Michael Rupp from Northwestern, to lead that effort. And we're working with NEASK, because I understand that there's accreditation issues. And so the proposal is not meant to her programs, to her accreditation. The proposal is meant to try to find a way to make all 12 more sustainable. You all are very invested in this institution. I totally understand that, and I would expect nothing else. If you weren't, then I would have a problem. I have 85,000 students that I'm responsible for ultimately, and 17 institutions, and 12 community colleges. And I don't want to see a college close. I mean, I mean that with all of my heart. I do not want to see one or two colleges have to close to solve this budget issue, because what's going to happen is it's going to disadvantage the students who go to that institution. Just like you so eloquently talked about the challenges of the students, transportation, they have to work, right, they have family obligations, it's that way around 12, just different. You go to a rural community, like a Quinnin Bog Valley, it's very poor out there and very rural, a different student mix, but still the same challenges in terms of poverty, in terms of opportunity, and for, you know, me to say, all right, it's a small school, it's way out in the middle of nowhere, it doesn't serve an urban setting like this institution or Bridgeport or Gateway, what happens to those students? So the conversation now, though, and I want to be very clear about that, has switched at the Capitol too, because of the, now another $900 million they're trying to cut. What are your reserves? They ask that every year, and they think that that's like free money, they can just, you know, sweep. As many people know, when they first, you know, when they first legalized the lottery in Connecticut, it was supposed to go to education, and, oh, by the way, they needed money, so they took it. When we got the tobacco settlement, it was supposed to go to public health and smoking cessation, oh, but when they needed the money, they took it. Reserves are there for a reason in our institutions, and our reserves, though, are dangerously thin. Our reserves represent less than one month's ability to pay our bills, system-wide. Some are better than others, but some have very little margin, what I like to call the Campus Rainy Day Fund, which is like my, you know, your savings account at home, in case something happens. I mean, you, most people would like to at least have the ability to pay more than one month's worth of bills if something happened. And it's also gone to, what would the savings be to the general fund if we closed one or two institutions? Now, we have to be responsive when the legislature asks us for numbers, and no numbers are going to go out until I review those numbers next week. Clearly, institutions in cities would not be something that I would consider, or I think that they would look to close. But if I'm presented with a budget, whenever a budget's adopted, and it could be June, it could be July, it could be in the fall, I mean, there doesn't seem to be any consensus around putting a real budget together, because it's hard to cut all that money. I mean, it's hard, I mean, there's not much more to cut without so severely hurting lives that I don't know how they're going to do it. But I'm going to continue to fight to make sure we don't have to close a school, because I don't want to pit Capital against Tungus or Middlesex against Northwestern. It's all about the opportunities that all of these institutions provide to our students. So I think it's worth having a conversation about, is there a different way in a state the size of Connecticut to achieve some leadership and management changes, to be able to come up with a much more sustainable model into the future? Because even if, for example, even if we were to close an institution, and we couldn't close it right away, right, you couldn't say, okay, September 1, we're closing, because first of all, you have people that are working in the campus, and people have notice provisions and collective bargaining rights, I totally get that. There has to be a teach-out of the students, what happens to the students. So there's no quick money in year one. It would be probably in year two, but then it still doesn't put the institutions or the system on a sustainable path into the future. I'm trying to look past the next budget cycle, and way after I'm gone, and I'm not going to be here for 100 years, I was just talking to the gentleman coming up, and he's actually been... been in state service longer than I have. I didn't, I thought I was one of the last remaining relics. Right? I mean, so, you know, he started, what, '72?
Seventy-two, yeah.
Yeah, I started in '80, so, you know, I, I thought I was here a long time. But, but way after I'm gone, I want to make sure that this conversation doesn't need to keep happening year after year after year after year. And so, the reason I'm coming out to, sorry, I came out a long time ago. I'm sorry, I just, I just slipped out, I'm sorry. Hey, I beat Barry Manilow, so I'm ahead of the day. Seriously, I'm 75 years old. Anyways, anyways, you can tell I'm a little tired, is, is to actually have people understand what the, what the rationale is behind the conversation, to hear questions and concerns, to be able to clear up any misinformation. And I don't have all the answers standing before you today. If I had all the answers, I wouldn't have to be here today. I would have put out a plan, which I haven't. I would have hired an outside consultant, which I haven't. And I wouldn't care what you said, but I do. And that's why I'm here. And that's why I've traveled all around the state, and we'll finish up at Middlesex tomorrow, Monday, not tomorrow, on Monday, and then, you know, and then get back to, you know, I've been going from campus campuses to the Capitol to try to continue to, you know, not only advocate for the budget and, and, you know, the, the system, but we have legislation up there on undocumented students, which is really important to me, and providing them with institutional aid that they deserve. So, that effort is ongoing. Plus, to try to kill a lot of bills that would not only micromanage our system and tell us how to conduct our business, even academically, and I don't even do that, I let Jane do that, but also, quite honestly, folks, would really undermine the basic principles of collective bargaining in our state. And all you have to do is look at a lot of the anti-labor bills out there and see that they're cosponsored by both sides of the political aisle, to know that this is a different year. And I've committed to many people, because I really believe this, to, to making sure that those bills are not enacted. I believe in collective bargaining. When I was in the governor's office, I worked very hard with many labor leaders, you know, to be able to get childcare workers the right to unionize, or to get personal care attendants the right to unionize, or grad assistants at the University of Connecticut, or we even got private security guards who worked in state buildings, the ability to get health and pension benefits through their outside contractor. Because if they didn't offer those, then the state was not going to hire them to work in the buildings. And whenever I see these guards, sometimes when I go in other buildings, they're like, ah! So, I believe in it. So, regardless of, you know, people, you know, think of the proposals, or people want to participate or not, I'm, I'm going to do what I think is right on a number of fronts, regardless of the outcome of this. But I'm going to stop talking now and just say one funny story before I finish. So, one of the first town halls I did, I was, you know, I kept, I was talking and talking, and I, you know, was tired of hearing myself talk. And I recounted the fact that one of my favorite coffee mugs says, despite the look on your face, I'm still talking. No, despite the look on my face, you're still talking. And I said that because I really thought it was funny, right? And so, about a week later, I get this package in the office, and a faculty or a staff member, I can't remember, you know, which she was, sent me the coffee mug. And now, it's, it's proudly displayed on my desk. I sent her a thank you note, right next to my favorite sign that says, sometimes a squeaky wheel doesn't get greased, it gets replaced. Because I don't want people to just complain. I want productive conversations. Even when I went to the legislature, I said, we have difficult things to do, just don't stand up and say, no. What are the other options? Give me something. Help me. I can't do this alone, and that's why I'm here today. So, however you want to structure comments, questions, answers, I'm a captive audience at my coffee.
I would ask, if whoever asks, asks a question, please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Marcus Lawson. I'm assistant professor here at the college, I teach history. Question that I have is, what is this present legislature going to do to flood the hole that is occurring within our educational system? And please let me explain myself. I go to school on Fridays, I go to school out of state, I go to school in Boston, taking music lessons, nothing special. One day, a Friday, I was on the bus, getting ready to go back to Hartford from taking lessons, and I happened to look around, and I saw all these students from Connecticut on the bus. I said, at first, I was a little bit surprised. They're coming to Boston to go to school, okay, Suffolk University, Boston Conservatory, New York Conservatory, all these colleges in Boston, they're expensive, why are they doing this? Okay? I didn't have an answer for that. But if we're looking at the numbers, if we're charging 500 or so for, like, a continuing education course, or, it's roughly $20,000 that's going out of the state of Connecticut per month north. If one was to do the math and look at a 12-credit student, taking 12 credits, that's over $2,000, that's just one student. And if those students are leaving the state of Connecticut, we are neglecting an opportunity to turn this economic will around, to be able to allow our educational system, the BOR and the universities and colleges, to be, one, competitive, and, two, self-sustaining. What are they doing? I'm walking around in Boston, I'm looking at Suffolk University, we have 500 law firms on our campus. I'm looking at all these advertisements. Of course, they don't have 500 law firms on their campus. What they're doing is, they're advertising, and they're saying, this is what we can offer you if you come to our university, if you are pursuing a law degree. That's the financial district. South Street Station is the financial district. There's thousands of people walking around, shops, everything, but the colleges and universities are right there. And given the fact that I'm on the bus, and I'm just looking at all these students with their book bags sitting there, when I got home that night Friday, I tested something. I said, let me step back and see who's going to pick them up. Mom and dad were right there in front of Union Station, waiting for them to pick them up. Then there was another bus that was going to Boston with another line of students, not Boston students, going to Springfield, with another line of students getting ready to go. I'm like, we're losing money because we're, we're allowing a population of students to leave the state of Connecticut, and we may not even be aware of it. What is this legislature going to do to help the educational system in this state to be competitive? We're competing against Boston and New York. Hartford is, Connecticut is sandwiched between two behemoth states. I went to school here, I went to school in Boston when I was a graduate student, here in, in Connecticut, Boston as well as New York City. I marveled at the transportation system. I said, my, my, my goodness, there's only one train track to, to leave Hartford? I'm going to New York, I'm going to Boston, I'm going to Washington DC. They have mass transit systems, people are moving and going back and forth. I looked at the Connecticut, I said, the MTA system, I could take a train from New Haven to New York, from New York to Providence Royal High, from Providence Royal High to Boston. Hartford is geographically isolated. What are they going to do to turn this around? This is not just a problem of faculty-staff that is becoming an expense, it's a problem that the state of Connecticut is not competitive. Sorry.
No, you, listen, I, I couldn't agree with you more. I would, first of all, suggest that you have that same conversation with the people that represent you at the State House. You know, there's a couple of things, just to respond quickly. I don't believe that there's an attempt right now to really prioritize where money is being spent. Because, first of all, when there's no, when there's not a lot of money, there's not a lot you can do. But, but I always like to say that, similar to your own household, right? Where you have a certain amount of money coming, you prioritize how you spend it. And you can't spend it on everything because you don't have enough. And I don't think that conversation has happened. I think, I think the, the electoral politics, where everything is two years, where every election is two years, has certain people not thinking beyond that cycle. So, there's never any sort of long-term planning efforts. Now, say what you want about the governor, and I'm going to give the governor a little plug here, but one of the reasons he's, he's, I think he's, he's not popular, there's a number of reasons, and I'm not going to go into that, but what he's tried to do, I think, is make long-term investments into the future and not only start paying the pension obligations that were kicked down the road in the past. So, the whole transportation initiative is about the future, about the roads, the bridges, about the train, about the buses, all of that. And he gets criticized for that. So, I think what you need to do is, you know, people represent you, and people like to hear from you. What we do, what we try to do is advocate for the system and the colleges, and we've had to try to change the narrative, right? Because for so long, all of our institutions and the board, since 2011, have been about apologizing for failed leadership. And there hasn't really been an effort to really showcase institutions or students. Last year, we changed that dynamic, and we brought our students to testify in front of the Appropriations Committee. And it was, last year and this year, it was the most compelling testimony that legislators heard, because they heard directly from the students whose decisions were going to affect their lives. The other thing we're trying to do is, is get more into the high schools, to talk to the high school guidance counselor community about what they do in terms of advising students where to go. And all you have to do, though, I'm going to be very honest, is go out and, you know, over Avon Mountain into the valley. And you have people that don't even mention going to a community college or one of our CSU's. A lot of it is about how they gain their rankings in the, you know, in the high school, about where they put the students. And I've even been in conversations, which I had to walk away from, at one of my grandson's lacrosse games, when I heard a bunch of parents being competitive with each other about where their child was going to school. So, right? And I actually, quite honestly, had a statewide official say to me recently that their son was going to Central, like it was a bathroom, right? So, 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 that's, that's what we're up against, and it didn't get like this overnight. But we need a lot of more voices like yours and others to really talk to the elected leaders, get into the high schools, talk to the guidance counselor community, work with the superintendents. I mean, I've been doing that at all, you know, at a, at a much higher, a much more visible level, but it needs to get down into the actual schools to be effective.
Thank you.
No, thank you for the comment.
I'm Jake, I'm the cap of, John McAdams, the advanced director here, and...
She should be raising money somewhere. She shouldn't be talking to me.
Cap, we'll be right after this question.
Okay.
I think, maybe you could clarify, maybe you did earlier, about the back-office functions and that 13 million savings, a little bit of it, if you're trying to extract out, in terms of, is that across the 17 colleges?
Yes.
And not just the community colleges?
Yes.
Is that a misconception?
Correct. It's, it's across all 17, and it's a target, right? And I, and we've, we've used, and I mean no disrespect by that term, but when I tried to describe it to people, they didn't know what I was talking about, right? And so, you know, I'm talking about the best way to not only save money, but that $13 million number is based on savings and revenue combined. So, for example, if we can do a better job at, at all of our institutions of the conversion rate for financial aid applications, we're going to get revenue. If we're able to keep more, more students in school, we're going to get more revenue. If we're able to come up with a, with a system, which I'm, you know, I'm going to, as soon as I'm done with this, with the road show, and Jane and I are going to sit down, is how can we find a way to have the last two years of certain academic majors offered at a community college by one of our universities? Students have challenges in getting to the community college. Why not bring the last two years in certain areas that are very, you know, high-volume to the campus? It keeps the kid or the student, because everyone's a kid to me lately. It keeps everybody in the system, and they get a great education. So, the 13 millions across 17, if it's fully implemented in two years, and it's a target. So, there's a lot of...
I might ask specifically this campus, it's been a moment of contention since the college relocated here in 2002, of the joint occupancy agreement. And I know you're up against, you know, labor, you know, personnel and other costs, and that was two administrations ago, where that joint occupancy agreement translates into hundreds of thousands of dollars out of the lock ran, I believe, to keep the doors open. And I wondered if, and it's out of your control, Department of Works or whatever somewhat, but I wonder if you're looking at those facility expenses that aren't mentioned in this situation, in terms of maybe changing that occupancy agreement, because...
Well, facilities management is one of the six categories. So, we're looking, and as a matter of fact, I've had a couple of conversations about this building, specifically.
Specifically to this situation here?
Right, because I didn't, because I didn't remember if, if the state actually owned the building, because at one point, the state didn't own the building. At one point, you, there was a, right, the building was leased, there was lease payments made to the ownership group, way back, probably what you're talking about. The mayor talked to me about, you know, can we, can we, can we think about moving the college to some of our schools that will be closed? And I said, I don't think so. So, no, that's definitely something that we're looking at. We're looking at all of the, all of the operational costs for all of our, all of our buildings, you know, because, because the state owns the buildings. The buildings aren't owned by the Board of Regents, right? So, for example, we moved our two offices, we had 39 and 61. And when I came there, I didn't understand why we had two buildings that we were maintaining, and why we had some of the senior folks in 39 and, actually, a lot of people did the work in, in 61. So, we moved, we moved over to 61. Yet, I didn't have, I didn't, one of the questions I've been asked, I didn't pay any money, there was no refurbishing of my, my new office or my old office, and I didn't get a bonus last year, so we'll just put that. I haven't gotten paid any more than when I first started. So, people always think that I'm, you know, getting, getting raises, when everybody else isn't. My mother didn't raise a fool. So, we are definitely looking at that.
Yeah, my name is Dr. Gregory Jedek. I'm an educator, historian, a parent, father of three small children, who probably hope to go through this system, so my question, also an organizer, so my question is broad. You had said in other spaces and in the press that the savings that you hoped would achieve through this process of consolidation would be reinvested into student services in one form or another. Now, as I understand it, you recently signed a new contract with the ORB, that'll end at some point, and you may very well, in the last year or so, you've been re allocated.
Till 2020, till they end at 2020.
So, though you may have the will to see that happen, and we've seen 30 years of legislative failure, and, you know, the failure at the level of higher education to transform this system, what guarantees could we have, once this consolidation goes through, that that money is actually going to be reinvested into student services? I know, within the transportation discussion, they're talking about lock boxes, and you envision some sort of lock box that prevents the reallocation of money that's saved through this consolidation to go into other spaces because the state is in such crisis.
Yeah, I would, I'm, listen, I would, I would envision, you know, I mean, even if I'm not here, down the road, there will still be a board... not here, down the road, there will still be a board that will be, you know, in many cases, still comprised of the same representatives, because people have very long terms. I mean, there's never any guarantee, right, in, no matter what you do. I don't want to put anything in legislation that talks about what we're going to do in our system, because once you open that door, right, then you go down the road of people trying to then manage what you, what you're, what you do every day, even at the institution level. You should see the bills that have been filed that basically say what we should do, even in academic areas. I mean, it's frightening that people that know nothing about academics are trying to legislate academic functions. So, so there's no hundred percent guarantee. That's my, that's my plan, that's my vision. I would like to get to a point, I've said this as well, that we can have a discussion at some point about not raising tuition.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
I say that because there's a, you know, the governor has been clearly negotiating with the press in his efforts to try and pressure C back into a deal which continuously grows in the state negotiations that have been dragged along to a point where in many respects, with the various legislation that is in the LOB, talking about right to work, requalifying of some bargaining unit members to managers, there's a lot of risk for state workers here. And I guess state workers would be asked to pay the brunt of this. Why is it impossible to have a guarantee? I mean, we, there's got to be some good faith effort to, you know, to be shown to both the students, citizens of the state, and also the state workers themselves, that they're making these sacrifices, it's going to not be squandered as it was in the various concession agreements. So why is that so hard to get a guarantee?
Well, I mean, it's because that, because what we're doing as a system is not part of that conversation, right? I, I understand that conversation's happening, I'm not involved. And I don't talk about that conversation, because people think that I'm threatening if, you know, if we start to talk about that conversation. I just read like everybody else does, what's happening. And I still have relationships in different places, and people tell me kind of what's happening or not. But for, you know, for, for us to put something that we're trying to attempt in terms of, you know, putting a much more sustainable fiscal picture in place would only get to be done through some sort of legislative action. Because even, even if there's an agreement, it's got to be ratified not only by members but by the legislature, as it was in, in 2011. So I, I would rather just make that commitment to you, that that's the plan, and try to meet that expectation while I'm part of the system. And if we have the system moving in a good place, and I really believe that that will happen. Now, there's never going to be any guarantee that people aren't going to come and just sweep money, right? And, and, you know, sometimes, sometimes you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't, right? If you don't try to do something to correct it, then people are going to accuse you of not being proactive, and then they will just do it themselves. If you do something to be responsible, and there's always a, an issue of maybe people saying, oh, okay, now you've got all these savings, we're going to grab the money. I mean, I get it. I guess, I guess while I'm here, I'm going to protect that. And no matter who the governor is in two thousand, January of nineteen, you know, we're going to have to continue those conversations. I'm, I'm just never a fan of putting something in legislation that then opens a door to other things for us. Now, I know about the transportation lockbox, that's at any revenue coming in, right? And look at the reluctance for people to even adopt that, which seemed like a no-brainer, quite honestly, right? If any, any additional revenue from either gas taxes or tolls, or any, anything dedicated to transportation could only be used for transportation, and they won't even vote to put it on the ballot as a constitutional amendment. So if, if that is, is as difficult, this, this would not be, not only would it not be easy to do, but I think it would give them much more control over what we do than they have now.
Morning, President Victor.
Hi.
I'm a student here. So, question. So a few weeks ago, we met in front of the Committee for Higher Education. Since that time, do you feel that the legislator and the committee has actually taken in some of the things we spoke of that day? Are they considering it? Some of the stuff that we did get to speak about, obviously, was the raising of tuition, reallocation of funds, the consolidation that was coming up. How, in your interactions with the committee over the past few weeks, how have they approached these subjects, or are they even approaching them?
Well, I think, I think, I think what you saw that day, you know, kind of what you see is what you get.
Yeah.
So if you remember, I was here, and you had people sitting to my left who were big supporters and would give us more money if they could, and have been really fighting for us hard. And then there are people who are sitting on my right. It was really interesting how that all worked out, to see them. But the people sitting on the right were the ones who basically said that you needed to do more to help yourself, right? Was that the, I mean, that was one of the messages that came through, right? And so people on the left are going to continue to advocate strong for what they heard from the students. And the people who are sitting on my right are going to continue to believe that if only students had more fire in their belly, and only students tried harder, that they could be successful. It was about personal initiative. If you remember the conversations, I haven't forgotten that conversation. And I, and I still go back to when I was sitting in front of the appropriations subcommittee, and a high-level ranking member of that committee said to me, we should not be helping subsidize students' transportation. That if students could only, let you use the words, or you can look it up, look it up on CTM, if only had more fire in their belly, they could get to school and succeed, never having probably traveled to a community college. And she was the example of her personal struggle going to school. And it started like, when I would get into my car to drive to Central. Okay, so, so think about it. When I would get into my car to drive to Central, my personal challenge was getting into the car because my driver's door was broken, I had to climb in on the passenger side. That was the struggle. Now, I can, I can relay it, because it was public, as I said. And so there's many people up there that don't want to understand the challenges or the obstacles that we put into the place, into place of students succeeding. And, you know, you can only beat your head against a rock so many times when it's just not worth it anymore, and so you know where to go and advocate, and you know it's never ever, ever going to get through. You know, I think right now, because of the financial issue, they're just looking for numbers. They're looking for dollars. There's not as, as much of a thoughtful policy conversation taking place as, as, as more transactional.
Hey, Carl.
How are you?
The language coordinator here at Capital. I would think that any business, any entity that's looking at its effectiveness and possible budget cuts needs to look at its purpose. And I think that the community colleges, I don't know about the four-year institutions, but the community colleges have the deck stacked against them already, because we are measured by a matrix that doesn't work for our community colleges. And so when you're trying to make intelligent decisions about what to cut, where to put resources, how can you do that effectively when the matrix you use to measure your success is flawed? And so as we look at this whole process, I think we need to acknowledge that, and we have to come up with a new matrix, a new paradigm about what is success for the community colleges. Our students are not full-time. Our students here in particular are suffering with extreme poverty. The matrix doesn't work. And so we need to look at what is success, and I would imagine if you went to all twelve institutions, the staff and the faculty would not have a good sense about how well they're doing with that matrix, except not well. So I really think we need to look at that before we can really make significant decisions. I mean, yes, we want students to graduate, but we need to go dig deeper. And I think that's...
Yeah, no, listen, I agree. We, Phil and I have had this conversation about how, how do we change the dynamic? How do we change the conversation so it actively reflects what's happening and not just a, you know, blanket standard? And I think, I think we do recognize the, the demographic of the, of the students. You know, one of the reasons we fought so hard last year to change the formula for the Roberta Willis Scholarship Program was because we recognized the, the numbers of part-time students in our community colleges who were not eligible to get that financial support before. And we were very hard to make sure that the new formula actually was beneficial, you know, to those students, you know? But that, but that's been cut as well. Two-point-five million dollars at least next year, and two-point-five million dollars the year after that. So there's really no easy answers here, but I think it's important to have the conversation so we understand what all the variables are as we, as we try to put a more sustainable process in place for the future. Because if we don't, and I've asked people unofficially that run universities or colleges, if you had, for example, at a university, a ten-million-dollar cut next year, because what I hear from the universities is, just leave us alone, we'll be fine, we can sustain budget cuts, but something's got to get cut. So when I'm told that maybe we'd have to cut career services, or I'm told we'd have to cut the number of already inadequate advisors, or we'd have to cut some of the really innovative programs that are starting up at institutions, how does that help? You know, when you go to some of our colleges, and they're closed on the weekend, or the libraries are closed during the week, or they have to reduce their, I mean, their security, you know, from five o'clock on, you know, in a standalone campus with a, with a, you know, perimeter that's all woods, how's that helpful to students at all? So that's why we're having the conversation, is to try to, is to try to figure out a way. Yeah?
I run the paramedic and fire science programs here. And to allude to what Carl just said, I think the first thing we need to realize is that we're not a business. We're not here producing widgets. We're here to educate people, and in my case, and the other health careers, we're here to take care of people. We don't measure things the way businesses do, and we can't decut the way businesses can. The other thing is, there is a perception, and this isn't just here, but you hear it all the time, and you actually alluded to it. We don't take the summer off. We educate people year-round. There is no off time, there is no waste, that is the perception of state employees in general. There is very little, if anything, left to cut. And to measure things based on arbitrary things, like a business, can't be done at any community college or any other school for that matter.
I, listen, I, I agree that you're not a business. And I, and I think, I think the conversation about cutting and funding is a conversation that we all need to have with the, with folks that actually pass the budget, right? Because we get a, we get a block grant. I mean, so, so this is what I, what we're faced with. We get a block grant from the community colleges that the legislature gives us. We don't get one block grant for everybody, and we get to make decisions on who needs it more, right? We get one that says, twelve community colleges will get this amount of money. And that's what we get. So while I know we're not a, a business, we still have to pay our bills, and we still have to pay all the employees that work in our system and at each of our colleges. And we have to make sure that we do that in a way, and we, we have a financial obligation, not only to pay people, but also not to disadvantaged students because of the actions we might take in terms of cutting budgets. So if there's only so much money, and I'm just being a pragmatist here, if there's only so much money, we need to figure out, how do we spend that money together? I'm, you know, I'm not in a role right now where I can influence what happens at a bargaining table in terms of a bigger picture. I'm a state employee just like you are, and I've been a state employee for thirty-seven years in many different capacities, and I know there's not a lot left to cut. Unfortunately, I'm not part of that bigger discussion. So, while I definitely do not view what you do here in a business-like way, and I wasn't referring to you not, people not working over the summer, but some of the institutions, when I've gone, I'm just telling you what I've heard, is that, oh, we can't participate in these planning sessions because we're not working in the summer. And so, and that, and that's what people tell me now. So I wasn't trying to be disrespectful to people that work in the summer, but I'm taking the totality of the conversations I've heard, whether it be at a university or the college, and just transmitting that information, not to be a, you know, a general statement, but just to tell you what some of the responses have been to me. I know people work hard, I know people work all summer. My obligation is the totality of seventeen institutions and the totality of twelve community And what I don't want to see happen, not only is us pitting one against the other, because that hurts the students, but I do not want to see an institution close. And I'm not just, you know, making this up. I hear the conversations when I'm up at the Capitol from both sides of the political aisle. Now, there used to be maybe one side would always want to shut everything down, and the other side would... The dynamic has changed. The dynamic has changed. And I've heard from people who have colleges in their district that you should just close mine. So I'm, I'm, I'm not coming in, in here without any sort of background of the political climate up at the Capitol. I, I come there with knowledge of what's going on, knowledge of that political dynamic, and looking to everybody, all the folks that we have in the system. And we have eleven thousand employees in the system. It's a lot of folks doing really, really hard work on behalf of all of our students. I want people to help shape the future, not only of this institution, but of the entire eighty-five thousand students that we serve. Yeah?
So you talked about making the system more sustainable, going forward, and you mentioned you're looking at both, finding ways to look at our revenues, finding revenue as well as operating more efficiently. We keep hearing a lot of talk about where we're going to cut, where we're going to consolidate, we're looking to centralize things to save money. But we're not hearing our strategic plan of where we're going to spend money that's going to have a good return on investment, so that in the long run, we are doing more sustainable than just saving money. So you're saying this is our admissions department, right here? Goodwin, you know these first two roles?
Exactly, exactly.
John is our one advancement person. Jane is our one marketing person. So we have to also be talking at the same time about how we can spend more money in these areas where we can actually get a, a return, so we can, those cuts don't have to be as, as great if we're able to make up some revenue on our own and not just rely so heavily on cuts and cuts. There's a lot of talk about that, and there's workers last year. There's a lot of talk about that, and there's workers last year. What we're not seeing is, is any communication from, from your office about this is what we're doing on that front to generate more revenues. And here's the implementation teams that are working on this right now. And here's our one-year, our three-year, our five-year plan. And that should be just as important as, as finding ways to work.
Now, listen, you're, you're, you're absolutely right. And the, the work group that was really charged with enrollment and retention, and how do we collectively find, you know, not only resources to enhance that, that function, but how do we, how do we employ best practices across the system? And are there enrollment management teams that should be set up? We're continuing to have that discussion, you know, as well. And I think, I think, you know, one of the things I've been, I've been trying to do is to, is to figure out how do we put together a team and maybe set some goals and strategies system-wide without eliminating the autonomy of each individual campus to do what they need to do in their local area, right? So it's a balance. And so we're, we're, we're taking a very hard look at that, and that is one of the things that we're gonna, you know, continue to do. We had that great work group, I don't know if you were involved. And so while that's not a, one of the functional areas that's part of this strategy, that work is, is definitely going to continue because, you know, because we need to do that. We need to continue to enhance the private money that comes into. You know, and because, you know, it's all about public-private partnerships now. You know, conversations I've been having at a, at a, you know, at a strategic higher level has been with some of our major employers, right, to, to really determine if they can be part of our collective solution. You know, you want our workers to come and be the, the future workforce, and we're adapting our curriculum to be able to provide those workers. How about putting some skin in the game? So whether it's a Pratt or a Sikorsky or an electric boat, or, you know, whether it's other companies from the southwest part of Connecticut, how, how can we have, you know, a better relationship, but not only a relationship, you know, in spirit, but a relationship where there's some money and some philanthropy that comes our way to be helpful? You know, we have, we have colleges around that have foundations where certain members have, you know, provided money to keep programs going. Down at Gateway, somebody just contributed last year fifty thousand dollars to help the automotive program continue because it's a high-cost program. So now we're definitely looking at that. But we also need to understand what the best practices are. And I know you don't have a lot of people, you don't have, like the Goodwin does, right? But I think the conversation is worthwhile to figure out what are you doing really well that you can share with others? Is there a way that we can maybe have a more regional approach where people help each other? Because it shouldn't be, you know, you know, when I first came here, people told me that there were boundaries. Like, boundaries? We're a state this big, what do you mean you have boundaries? Somebody said, no, no, we can't go, right, all right? They said, we can't go, you know, this is Manchester's boundary, and we can't go because this is.
Territory.
Territory, yeah. What do you mean territory? I said, show, somebody show me a map. I still haven't seen a map. I've been asking for a map. That's ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous that people should be precluded, especially if you don't have programs that compete with the school right next to you. That makes no sense to me. And maybe there's some act, there's some, I defer to the provost to tell me that I'm crazy on the academic side of the house. But we should be, we should be about helping each other get the students in and keeping the students. So when, when we agree, I haven't been in the office in like two weeks. I live out of my car, I look like, I look like a bag person with my little protein bars and drinks. But once I get it back into the office next week, we're gonna, we're gonna regroup, and we're gonna figure out what we've heard and where we need to go. Not only in those function areas, but exactly what you just brought up.
I would say generally that it's just as important to be, as far as we are to centralize and purchasing operations, that we can do more to say, well, we're gonna try to increase our revenues by X amount for next year by spending more or, or, you know, coordinating our marketing efforts, promoting ourselves with the system and the value of the system. You know, that could be more valuable than, than possible. And I don't think that we're pushing hard enough on that. I felt like those working groups happened, and then ideas came from it, but it's sort of taken taxi, it just had, and perhaps it has.
It hasn't been as public, only because the budget, yeah. And so, right, and so, right, and so that's probably my fault for not communicating better. And I know the marketing group did focus groups, there were focus groups that were held, and they are developing a plan for, for this fall for the college. There, there's some plan in process, and, and that group continues to, to meet. Well, I'll just do a better job of communicating where that all is, because if it's, if, I mean, I know it's happening, but you don't, so I need to, I need to better communicate that. So thank you, thank you. Did you write that down?
I did. Do you please refer to the design thinking document that was distributed to the council presidents that I received that, that incorporates the ideas we're talking about? It's just released to your presidents, and all of these areas identify of ways in which we can focus on not only the recommendation from the implementation teams that were all last year, but they prioritize per, across the entire academic student affairs division, what many of these ideas are, and new ideas. So we've gone to the presidents, I've asked the presidents to, to look at the document.
It was just Tuesday, it was just a couple days ago.
We just got it, we just got it. To look at the document, and then.
I'm gonna ask you the other thing.
Thank you, but I prioritize the power of the institution. Yes.
Right.
Which ones are most, otherwise we really focus on. I can also speak to the marketing, because I'm not a government. We will be seeing something going out, ready to system. But within that, how we as our university institution don't lose our ideas.
Right.
Having that, it's an important, interesting conversation.
Yes.
Good morning, sir. My name is Tim Taylor, I'm a part-timer here. And one thing we're talking about, following up with Professor Lawson said. I teach this summer, usually I have a couple of courses. Over the last two years, I've had something very interesting. I've had students reaching out, asking, requesting a syllabus in my, my average second office from Cornell, University of Virginia, Hampton, and I think it's in California again. But they somehow know about the online course for the Capitol's teaching, and they're asking for the syllabus so they can improve their departments to enroll in classes. And so it started happening a couple of years ago. I teach one online course over the winter. So I got this idea, and I started writing to people, my classmates around the country. One of them teaches at a community college down in Jersey, and other people around. And I'm saying, hey, I'm teaching this course, it's five weeks, and in five weeks you're gonna accrue three credits. I'm starting to get responses. Three weeks ago, listening to NPR coming in, and lo and behold, Wesleyan University pitched the same thing. They're reaching out and saying, hey, look at our summer courses, we're only five weeks. You can, instead of thirteen, you know, thirteen weeks for that three credits, you can do it in five. Give us a little over. And as I say, I'm drafting my, my business plan, and I'm setting up the people now for the summer classes to start getting the mail in, in July. And I'm wondering, am I pretty much, is it just me and Wesleyan, or is it something that's made this decision? It's just my life? Because I'm surprised that, I say, getting letters from, no, I'm a Columbia guy. Getting letters from Cornell and other schools on that venue to coming here to take the summer classes. And I'm like, wow. We really got, we really have a, a resource that we can use to exploit. So maybe get our whole, that's a good idea.
Absolutely. And I, you know, I have not heard that as I've traveled, but one of the reasons we have the provost here today is to, is to, right, take any innovative concepts, and maybe we can move them to the next level. But that's the first I've heard as I've traveled around, so I appreciate the comment.
Well, I'll tell you, three years ago, I had three students in Cudahy. They were taking my American Girl class. We got in a conversation, you should have seen the papers they wrote comparing our constitution with theirs. But I'm like, you're half over, like, I just hear about the Capitol. But, so, again, I think there's a potential that it could happen.
One question, are you Sarah affiliate, or are you a Sarah affiliate institution?
My call. Go ahead. Sorry, one quick thing.
It's all right.
I'm at Professor Taylor, a really international campus. If you have questions about it, Mary can tell you. We have a lot of students from out of the country. But to my point was mostly student-centered, but the last two years that I've been here, I've heard one specific issue, and it's something that got brought up at the committee hearing a few weeks ago, and that's the transfer credits. And they were talking about standardizing it so that if you're coming from one of the in-state schools, going to an in-state school, your credits transfer, especially if the classes line up. And a lot of, you know, over the last two years, it's been a complaint that it doesn't transfer. There are a lot of students that say, hey, you know, I just got my degree, but I can only bring eighteen out of my, you know, forty-eight credits. So is there, is that something that's actually gonna come in place? Is that something that?
Well, I mean, we, we have the TAD program that now offers a seamless transfer within twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight major areas of study. And that, that was a very, very thoughtful process done from faculty to faculty. And because that was an issue that for years had been, I think, plaguing public higher education. And so I think we've done a really good job of starting that process, and we're gonna, we're gonna continue to move the majors along. How many students do we now have in the, eight hundred maybe students that have signed up at the beginning into a seamless pathway?
Thank you. Just, oh, sorry, Kevin Lamb is speaking this year. It's one of the things I've been, I've been thinking about the last, all these months of, of discussions, is how reactive everything is. I understand the need to be reactive when you get budget updates and tax receipts are not as large among this group and all this other thing. But I really want to challenge the board to be proactive and to think progressively as we look at the future of higher ed. So the things that come to mind are the SUNY and CUNY system and what they're doing to offer free college tuition. You have the Tennessee promise, you have the Oregon promise, right? And I think that's the future, and I think that those, those are the things we need to be thinking about here. And I understand it's not easy to do when the economics are, are not quite there. But one of the things I've seen in those models is that they've de-politicized and sort of taken the funding streams to a certain extent out of this state budget process, right? So, and I have to do more research on exactly how that works, but I would, I'll, I'll send you guys some stuff. But the idea is that we would come up with a funding stream, maybe not every funding, every piece of funding that we have, but there's, there are, there are models out there to take the funding streams out of this very political, very, every year, every other year kind of cycle, because we're gonna have this meeting again in a year or two, right? When this is, there's more problems.
No.
So, that's the thing, right? For all of our mental health, I would suggest, and the sustainability of our system, I would say we need to start thinking about what are ways that we create endowments or recreate, like, what, how do we take that block grant and start building something that is insulated? Because, you know, education is not the same as politics, and it shouldn't be this political thing. And it shouldn't be at the, at the whims or at the mercy of, thank you, Amy, you've steved me my life.
Sorry.
It shouldn't be at the mercy of this kind of thing, because it's way, the stakes are way too high. You know, and you've heard the stories, and I, I wish you had been here yesterday because some of the stories were just, I mean, we hear these stories every semester from our own students, but then some of the ones we heard yesterday at the Compassion Project were even more devastating, you know? But then, of course, triumphed it because they were able to persist based on the human contact of what we're dealing with here. The stakes are too high to rely on contentious politicized budget rotation every year or two. And I think that that should be the, the main vision of the board, is how do we create funding that is insulated from all of this stuff, so that we don't have to keep having these conversations? And I don't know, am I wrong in thinking that that's?
No, 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 listen, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a perfect concept. And I think what we're, we're trying to do, first of all, is do some research on some of those other states, because as I delve into free in other places, it's not really free, right? And so it sounds good, right? We're gonna offer a free community college in Rhode Island. We're gonna offer a free public college in New York. But as you drill down, it's not as free as you think, and it's only to a limited amount of, of students. And I think what we, what we need to remember is we want to continue to have those conversations. I mean, the reason we started the work groups last year, right? Less, you know, probably, you know, less than a year into my term was so we could try to be proactive, so we could take all of the, the lessons of what had gone wrong in the past and try to make them right. And try to actually, for the first time, have, have people work together across seventeen institutions without pitting two against four year, and all of these things that continue to, I think, get in the way of us really working as a system. And then the financial situation became more difficult. And, you know, when, when eighty percent of your, of your total budget are people, right? You have to, you have an obligation to provide for those people and to pay those people and to give them the benefits that they expect and deserve, and that have been negotiated, right? Out of eleven thousand, this is really interesting, out of eleven thousand employees, there's only three hundred employees that aren't represented by collective bargaining. Only three hundred. Ninety, ninety-five percent of our employees are represented, which is, which is, which is a good number. Everyone deserves representation. But, but even if we were to say we're gonna, we're gonna eliminate all of the management confidential people in the world, we still wouldn't have that sustainability that you need. So I think we have to remember we have obligations to our people, and I take that very seriously. But as we now look to the future, we are exploring some very creative ways of doing things differently and getting more revenue into the system. What usually happens, though, is you have, you have a budget crisis, and you have to deal with that first to make sure that we don't suffer some really negative impacts of that, that we continue to advocate for our piece of the pie and even a greater piece of the pie. But, but we're out there all the time talking to, you know, national foundations and national philanthropy individuals about being partners. You know, these things take, these things take time. So I think you make a very, very good point. I would love if you find, you know, when you drill down and get some research for you to send it to me, because I've just done a sort of a cursory review, because I like to find out what's free, because I never think, you know, the old adage, nothing is really free in life. But, but I would love to continue the conversation, have you share some thoughts or some of the research that, that you'll do.
If it's like debt-free, right? Isn't Quinabon, I believe Quinabon is now completely debt-free.
Yeah, but, but we have to remember about debt-free.
No, but again, but I, I know it costs money, I'm not saying it's a cost, but I'm saying that is a selling point for our school. And that, and the fact that we are, already are such low-cost.
Right. Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
So we could be really spreading that out there, and if it's, if it's not just low-cost, but it's also debt-free. And I think it's some, I don't know what the percentage is here, but I think it's pretty high. But that's something we need to be putting out there.
Absolutely.
And raising tuition is not gonna draw up, is not gonna raise enrollment.
The other thing that's important is, I think you know, you're doing a good job here, is financial literacy, right? Because you can say something is debt-free, but that doesn't count the fact that because you weren't advised that there was this really, really low-interest student loan, and you didn't want to take a loan, so you put it on your credit card, or you've got a credit card and you charged it, that's considered debt-free. But is it really debt-free? Because I don't think, I don't think there's, there's. Because I don't think, I don't think there's, there's a wholesale approach to informing students on what they should be taking advantage of for their specific situation. I'm not saying that's done here, because, but as I've traveled to other places, right? I've, I've said to, I've said to students, so you're not gonna have any debt when you get out? Did you charge anything on your credit card? Oh, yes. Eighteen and a half percent interest? Oh, yes. That's not debt-free to me. So I think, I mean, I think it's important that we try as hard as we can for students to be debt-free. And we're also trying to make sure that we protect Pell Grants at the federal level. I mean, a lot of what's gonna trickle down to us is not, is not gonna be in this, be decided in this room. It's gonna be decided by, I'll refrain from a political judgment, but by, by people of Washington. Yeah. Eighty-five thousand. We have eighty-five thousand students in our system. Ninety-two percent are from Connecticut. Most of our students are first generation. Most of our students are from working families. We educate Connecticut. We educate Connecticut. Yeah.
Going back to the TAP model, which I think is really tremendous that that's finally happened. Because I came in in eighty-five when they were talking about it. I'm very happy to see it happen. So we're talking about creating an ergonomic system. My concern about the TAP model, and I think you're starting to look at this as I talk to the folks involved, the career planning piece of it. Because we're thirty-five years here, we can't assume that when students come in that they know what they're doing. Many of them do not. They are not efficient in how they go about this because they are first generation. They don't have guidance. And they think they're interested in one thing and then they wind up forty credits in with financial aid and everything, and it's not the right program. And oftentimes, they don't seek us out to talk about it with us. They go through the whole degree program and then tell us. So I think if you're going to institute that program, which is great, there has to be a lot of upfront loading in terms of the career planning piece. We can't assume that these students are coming in and they're selecting degree programs and that means they know what they're doing.
Right. And I will let, because we had this conversation as well at the President's meeting. Jay, you want to talk about?
Yes.
What we're doing in that area?
Certainly, another new initiative is one that focuses on career-ready graduates, which is an integrative approach of career services across academic fields. Beginning the freshman year through the senior year, it's modeled after Benford University and Wellesley Brandeis. We've already had several meetings with the academic deans, with the VPs of student affairs. The first time, I remember, there was a room packed full of us.
Imagine people talking together.
Well, we're talking across divisions to ensure that not only is students career-ready, but that there are measurable outcomes. And students understand the relationship between employability and the skills grounded in a solid liberal arts foundation. There are competencies that we're identifying that will guide the quality of the career-ready graduates. Critical thinking, you know what they are. They come from the LEAK AQ motto. So all of this is in the process now.
A discussion, yes.
And I certainly appreciate your support, but we're not seeing a lot because.
We're not there yet.
Coming from a campus level to the, to this level with Mark and all, that we share this with the Council of Presidents' hers. So I try not for us to get ahead and then get it. But we're still on the academic and student fair side. We are working toward that. It's gonna be phenomenal. We have, yeah, so.
So I'm so excited to hear that.
That's great.
Because it's been in my heart forever to do this.
Wow.
And if you haven't looked at the National Career Development Association guidelines, it maps this whole thing out.
NACE.
Yeah, no, not NACE.
Not NCE.
Send it to me. I will, I will.
Alright.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
When, if this goes back to my comment before and some of the other comments made today, but when we try to have the matrix to judge success, I was at a state convention and learned about a program that's at Northwestern. And of the participants, I think all of them graduate in this program. They, all of them almost have a three-point-oh average. They all get a certificate. And so they have impressive results. It is funded primarily through the Workforce Board, which is probably getting its funding from the federal government. But the comment that I'd like us to take home is, we live in one of two states that does not have a county form of government. We have silos all over the place and we don't work together. This program has funding so that if a student needs tires for his or her car, they could provide funding for that. It looks at what we should all be doing is the holistically at the people we are serving. And this state is terrible at that. We, our students need childcare, they need financial aid, they need a variety of supports to be successful if we're trying to reach that matrix. And I know that in times of severe budget cuts, we don't think progressively. But we've got to find some space to think progressively and look at our students holistically and look beyond higher ed solving this problem totally. Because we cannot, because transportation, childcare, et cetera, are all issues that prevent our students from being successful. And so if we can work across departments as other states do.
And, and I don't want to leave you today thinking we're not doing that, right? And because some of that, some of those conversations never get publicized, right? The reason we now are gonna be moving towards a, a, a transportation fee for full and part-time students is because of conversations we've had with Department of Transportation. Right? The reason we're talking about, we met with folks from Washington yesterday on SNAP Employment and Training Funds. And we're now gonna be modeling Connecticut for how this is, you know, how this is working. And that's because of conversations we started with the Commissioner of DSS. We're now having a conversation with the Commissioner of DCF around foster care students. And what are the challenges they have and how can we be helpful to them? We're talking to the Department of Housing Commissioner about can we use some of her low-income rental assistance money to provide a pilot program to see if students can live in the dorms using that kind of money? We're talking to the new Commissioner, because I talked to the old Commissioner who left of early childhood, about what can we do when we write federal proposals on the childcare issue? These are conversations I have that are leading to results. And, and, but when we have a transport, when we roll out a transportation fee, it's just not because we thought of it and said, here you go. It's for months and months and months and months of work with the, you know, with the DOT. So, you know, maybe these are the kinds of forums we need to do more often, where we talk about what we do. But just know that, you know, we're engaged on a number of fronts. This one just happens to be the most public right now because it is a result of, I think, some budget issues. But since I've gotten there, we have just started to work with our partners across state agencies because nobody ever was before. And I didn't understand that. So be assured that we're thinking progressively as well as just on this specific issue. She, first, I.
President O'Dea, I'm Kathy Heron, I teach math here. And I'd like to commend you on two parts of the strategy. First is not putting, closing one of the community colleges on the table. Of course, community college is a key asset in any community. We remove that institution and we remove a key asset for many, many of our residents. The second is not reducing faculty ranks. I'm a full-time faculty member for many years. As faculty have retired, we haven't always replaced them. And faculty not only teach full-time, both the wonderful adjuncts, but they do much of the other academic work at the college, develop new programs, curriculum, advise students. So I am very pleased that they are not, it's not part of the strategy. And I hope that in the near future that we will be able to hire more full-time faculty. I think that will only improve our institution itself.
Oh, thank you very much, thank you very much. Yes.
Hi, my name is Mary G. Ford and I teach a range of business courses. When you began today, you distinguished strategies, your two strategies vis a vis a plan. What I would like to know at this point, because I know time is of the essence for everybody, can you identify the three priorities that drove the two strategies? And your timeline for implementing those strategies?
Sure.
Because I guess I would just add, as, as you well know, change is very difficult for most of us.
Even for me.
And there's been a lot of communication, a lot of possibly, you know, misunderstanding of, of what your, your strategies are. But I think it's critically important to frame the priorities that drove your strategies and the implementation. Because what is crystal clear from this conversation is that the change is inevitable. I mean, I think you've been very open. I think you've been inclusive and are indicating, you know, listening to what we have to say. But there is a real reality that the system is, is confronting. So again, I would just like to understand from your point of view, can you identify one to three priorities that drove your strategies? And what is the implementation plan for those two particular strategies?
So let me start with the last part first. And that is, there's planning teams that will work on each of the six functional areas. And we hope, hope to have a process be, be able to be implemented in two years. Some could be sooner because there was a lot of work done, for example, on the purchasing front by the purchasing work group. And they came up with two different designs based on short-term and long-term. And I think we just need to carry that forward. So some things may be able to be finalized sooner and some probably will take longer than two years. It's not really set in stone. I think the other strategy, the presidents are now needing to come up with some scenarios, less led by President Brooke of Northwestern, to come up with some scenarios on how the leadership consolidation might look. And we still have to have conversations with NEAS. And I think I'm going there in chew to meet with the commission so that we fully understand, working with Jay, and what we have to do and what we can't do. Right? I don't want to do anything that's gonna hurt quality, that's gonna hurt accreditation, that's gonna hurt national accreditation in certain program areas. That's not the, the reason. The things that drove me to propose the strategies was always keeping in mind, as you all do, what is important for our students. So when I say students first, I mean them. People have questioned the motivation behind what I'm doing. We can disagree on approach or strategies, but, but the motivation is there. As I have met with every single student group around all of our campuses, it's become clear to me that we need to change what we do to make it easier for them to succeed. And not the other way around. Because there have been people who have said, we can absolutely not change. So what happens, then the student is disadvantaged. As I looked at the landscape politically and financially, my priority was not to close a college, was not to deny access to students who live in that community, the ability to go to that school. Because given the challenges we've all talked about today, they would end up not going. And I don't intend to throw away people. You know, I was just at an editorial board the other day where someone was trying to bait me into saying, we shouldn't offer remedial education to our students. It's too, it's too costly. And I said to that individual, you want me to just throw away those students? Say they have no value? I won't do that. And the third thing that drove me was that as I looked at what was being cut historically, I was seeing more of a tendency to cut student service areas. Not because people wanted to, but because they felt they had to. And I thought if we had a different approach and a different model, we could not only prevent them that from happening, but also maybe improve and enhance those services that we're able to offer students. Now I know that everybody interacts with students and advises them and mentors them. But when you look at the specific ratio of academic advisors to students in our system, the average is one academic advisor to eight-hundred-and-forty-nine students. Now, you, as a math faculty, I know that you mentor and advise your students and that isn't counted in that number. But wouldn't it be nice to have more people specifically empowered to advise students? Wouldn't it be, no, I'm serious, wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be much, much more important for students not to have one person in a career center office? I happen to think so. So it was really a desire to, and a commitment I made to the students when we were talking early on about tuition with them. One of the community college students from another part of the state said to me, President O'Dea, we trust you. But if you're gonna ask us to invest more in our, in the cost of our education, will you please commit not to reduce our services? And that's, that's kind of what's driving me.
I guess just as a follow-up, having been involved in budget crisis crises, which this is certainly one, I guess from my own experience, and again, I, like Kathy Heron, admire you coming out to the institutions and, you know, speaking about your values and what you're trying to retain. Unfortunately, with the significance of the budget issue facing the system, it just seems to me that difficult choices are going to have to be made. And certainly in the short term. And, and that to me means that not all priorities can be met, but rather, choices are going to have to be made. This is what we're going to do and this is what we're not going to do. And in, in listening to the discussion today, I admire the positive attitude you express about a lot of things that you want to have continue or that you don't want to have occur. I just don't know how you're gonna make the numbers work.
Well, I mean, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to do our best to make the numbers work. And I, and I always start from a, from a position of, you know, of being optimistic. That's the way, maybe it's foolhardy of me, but the glass to me is always half-full. And then somebody has to empty it out before I realize that there's no more water to drink. But I refuse to start from a position of, we can't. Sure, there's gonna have to be difficult choices made. And I'm, you know, the one that's gonna have to make those difficult decisions after getting as much participation from people in this room and other rooms as, as possible. I, I think even if we didn't have the budget situation, we should still be having this conversation. Right? Because, because we should have had it a long time ago. And so this just has, like, put it in a much more time-sensitive position. But I, I believe we should, we should have this conversation. should have had this conversation since 2011, 2012. When I took this position, I'll be very honest, I did not know the kind of situation I was walking into. Of course, I've done that many times in my life. When the mayor of Hartford years ago asked me to be the chairman of the Hartford Housing Authority, I thought, oh, cool, I get to be a chairman of something. And then I actually served on that for five years and had to reconstitute the whole thing. I don't, I don't know if I would have been the right person for this position had things been rosy, and things had been great. You know, I've liked, I've been known as somebody that can go into a situation that's not working as well as it can, and bring everybody to the table and figure it out, and get to a solution. Whether it was negotiating the Governor's Second Chance Society Bill, I went to the Capitol with all political parties in a room till four in the morning. We didn't. So I know it's not going to be easy. It does keep me up some nights, because I understand we're talking about people. We're talking about people's lives. We're talking about students' lives. And I'm just going to share, you know, another story. And it's not about this CBAC, but it's about CBAC 11. You know, when I was asked to take the lead on that for the administration, I knew nothing about negotiating with, with labor unions. I just had great relationships with labor leaders over the years. So they sent me into a room, not knowing what was going to happen. Everybody passed budgets with the big number in the budget. But I knew that if we weren't able to come together, and it was my job to help make that happen, that it was going to so negatively impact people's lives, that I worked as hard as I could and stayed up, you know, night after night after night to do that, and couldn't sleep the other nights because of that responsibility. I feel the same kind of responsibility now that if we don't get there, and we don't get it right, and we don't do it together, I mean, people can criticize me all they want. I have tough skin. You know, I'm a lot tougher than I look. And somebody said, I'm still standing. Yes, I'm still standing. And I will continue to stand, because I believe in what all of you do, and I believe in our collective desire to make our students successful. Yes.
Nice to be here. Thank you for coming today. That's been really helpful. The struggle that I'm having in the room today is that you're, you're proposing these strategies for the possible two years from now implementation. And the budget managers in the room were told a week ago to submit a budget today for five and 10% decrease. And for those of us who do have all those students on the front line, that's like an immediate hit. It's not a two years from now when the students aren't going to be affected. Students are going to be affected this week for those of us who are proposing dollars for July 1. And I, I read the papers every day. I get it. And I'm, you know, married to a Republican who's always talking about the budget.
Something about being married to Republicans. Some of my best friends are Republicans, by the way.
But I think, you know, there is this immediate, like today.
You're absolutely right. There is this immediate.
The dollars in nursing, which is one of our highest-employed graduate programs in the college, and the unique thing about the nursing graduates is they take employment at Hartford Hospital St. Francis in Bridge, and they stay for 20 and 30 years. They don't resign in seven months and go, I'm going to become a nurse practitioner, move with my accountant husband to Boston. They really don't. And so the investment in Connecticut of keeping programs with high career employment going is, is important. And everyone feels that way in this room. It's not true. It just happens to be my expertise. But, but, you know, but already is a pretty significant, like, what do you absolutely have to have to make it work July 1. And so it isn't like the students aren't being impacted. They'll be impacted July 1.
Well, I mean, the, the goal is to try to, is try to minimize that impact in the short term. We may have to look at, you know, one of the reasons I tell people not to speak about reserves is we may have to use them for a short period of time and then replenish them. Because there are going to have to be tough decisions made whenever there's a budget. It could be July 1, it could be not July 1. So we're going to have to collectively figure that out. And working with your president, we will, you know, we'll, we'll have to make those decisions on where, of where the cuts are going to come from. But we have to plan for every scenario. And I think that's the process that you're now engaged in. I mean, I read the paper just like you read the paper. I know what's going on in the executive branch, like you know what's going on in the, in the executive branch. And, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to minimize any impact that that might have on, on us. But in the short term, it's going to be tough. I need to look at the short term and the long term. Because if I just stopped with the next budget cycle, I would be no better than people making decisions in the Capitol.
I just want to say one more thing that just constantly tells me, because I am the mom of a kid in New York City and the other one to Boston, and they're not coming back. And that's the truth. But it is still compelling that the community college veterans stay. They are the future of Connecticut. Their, you know, their faces and their futures are extremely bright. We have to invest in them. Because, you know, the other kids are voting. They are. And, you know, this state is, is too smart to neglect this population, because, because really, this is our future. You know what I mean?
I couldn't agree with you more. That's a point that I've been making tirelessly up at the, you know, Capitol. I would encourage you to reach out to whoever represents you. You know, people that work at institutions have, in some cases, a couple options. They can reach out to their delegation in the, in a geographic area of the institution, or if you live in another Senate or House district. Email people. Talk to people. I mean, those are the people that are going to make the decisions. And unfortunately, the dynamic up in the building right now is not about long-term policy decisions. It's about quick fixes.
Quick fixes.
In the back of the, I'm sorry, you already asked one. I'm trying to get everybody who didn't ask a question first.
Hi, my name is Mike. I'm a math professor here. I want to thank you for coming today. And I get the sense that your comments are purely genuine, so I thank you for that. My background is in finance and actuarial science, investments, et cetera. So I'm always much more interested in the revenue side than the cost side of things. And so to sort of be in alignment with what some of the others here have said, we have a cost issue right now that's, that's the main reason you're here. You made a comment that the system provides education for approximately 85,000 students in state. And 92% of those students are in-state students. They're, they're from Connecticut. So that's, that's about 75,000. There's about 350,000 residents between 18 and 23 years old in Connecticut. So that represents approximately a little less than one out of four higher education-age students that Connecticut is retaining. Do you have any sense of how we compare to other states as far as the percentage of their own residents they retain in higher education? And the, the reason I ask that, and you might not know those numbers, I could probably look those up.
We can look those up. Actually, actually build those.
Okay. What I think is really important is going forward, a long, long-term strategy is for us to do all we can, outreach in the, you know, high schools, et cetera, to promote what we offer here, because everybody in this room believes we offer something very special. And I just wonder how we stand relative to other states in retaining our students in state.
You really touched a point that's near and dear to my heart. The broken news side of it is really important. I approach the numbers a little differently than what we do. What we see is, in any given year in the past, let's say, 10 years, our system has, well, first of all, seven out of 10 students that graduate from high school in a given May will be going to post-secondary education of some sort the following year. Typically, we get about 38, 40% of students that are going into post-secondary education in our system. And that hasn't changed. What has changed is the absolute number of students that graduate from high school. It's going down. So if we continue to capture the same market share, to use a business term, I'm sorry, what, what happens is, our numbers are going to go down quickly. So you're right, we have to do a better job of two things in my mind. Great promotion, marketing, the programs and services that we provide at good value, the best price in the state. And so, it's a, it's a situation where I think, you were talking during the department, too. But, and I was thinking, after you mentioned that, this army that schooled across the river, that's, well, the thing about that is, that's a matter of pooling our resources. They only have 3400, 4,000 students. We have 85,000. And if we start to think about consolidation as a good thing, where we pool our resources so there's not just two of you thinking about the same issue, but there's 14 of you. Then we've got, we've got some critical mass to attack these things and be more competitive.
Do you have any sense of how we compare to other states in retaining?
Well, it's a, it's really interesting when you start comparing yourself to other states, because other states rely less on public, on private education. If you live in the Midwest, public institutions own the market. But, but in the East, not so much. Okay? So it's not the same. We do come in with a larger share of students at the states. It's a good project. But we have to remind ourselves of this.
I think I have time for one more, because then I have to go listen to your dean at Jackson Labs give a keynote address before we sign a historic agreement with Jackson Labs. But I want to, you're on at 12 or 12:15?
Yeah.
Okay. 12 o'clock. Okay. So, so, last question.
Yeah, I may, that's a different way, a different point. But if the state of Connecticut, right, creates the apparatus necessary for all of its residents to be able to live in the classroom, and from the beginning of the discussion in the last few years, taxes are off the table. They're way off the table. Now, many of the state workers in this room, as well as the students, 85,000 students, 11,000 workers, we're talking about 100,000 people that are also residents of the state of Connecticut. And I guess this idea of leaving taxes off the table, right, means that there's going to be surplus income from people who are not going to be taxed that can, you know, subsidize what's not, you know, be able to pay for the private education that many of their children are going to be able to afford. Now, I think we agree that demographically, the students we, we interact with, and many of the workers here are not members of the elite, and therefore are not going to be privileged to many of those tax breaks that the 1%ers are pushing apart for. If that's true, and I think it is, how will we ever change the disparity that exists in this state, both intellectually, academically, and materially, if we're funneling resources at a structural level to make sure that the richest 1% are going to continue to have resources to be able to subsidize their students, when we all, when our workers are making market valuing have nice benefits, but the cuts that are going to come are not just affecting their capacity to be able to put aside for their children, but in real time, as has been said over here, the students are going to feel a deficit. So I just don't understand, if education is the great upliftor, how the sustainability of a system, right, which provides to these students, can be thought about without thinking about the vast disparities that exist within this state? And, I mean, it's more of a common better question, but it just seems that this problem is just going to perpetuate, you know, exponentially going forward if we don't invest in this system.
I think, I think you're preaching to the choir, number one. Number two, you sound like my good friend Sal Luciano every time I talk to him about the, the same thing. You know, I'm not part of that conversation. I'm not part of the conversation about what is going to be the mix.
But you had a chance to talk to these. Come on, you said it's already.
No, I talked to, but, but, but I'm not, I'm not in the room helping to make decisions. And, and when I was in the room helping to make decisions, maybe in 2011, you saw a different mix. Right? I mean, you saw, you know, the whole third, the third, the third model, which I, which we thought at the time would be enough, that we wouldn't, you wouldn't be back here in 2016 and 17 having the same conversation. So I can talk to people. It's just my, my influence right now, my sphere of influence is in this room, is in this system. And I'm doing the best I can do with what resources not only do we get. You know, we, we had gone in, when the budget came out, there was one block grant. I don't know if you noticed, it came out with one block grant, which would have given us more flexibility in how we distribute the totality of the appropriation we get. I actually like that. There was a reason it came in the budget as one block grant, because I thought we would have, then have the ability to, to help our neediest institutions and not harm our more wealthy institutions. Legislature decided they did not want to do that, because they would lose control, right? And the colleges, and the university folks were afraid that I would give more money to the colleges. Some college people were afraid I'd give more money to the universities. I, I don't have a lot of flexibility in what I can do. What I do have flexibility in those matters, we're going to continue to work on. Listen, I, I never say, you know, my mantra is, nothing's off the table. And I, I feel, you know, as I, as I read and watch what goes on, people have taken certain things off the table. I don't really have control over that. So thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to be here. See ya. See you, folks.